I'd like to call a meeting to order. Oh, he walked away. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Has there been a declaration of public notice?
Yes.
Yes, good, thank you. Order of business. Don't see any issues. Public appearances, we have one. Please give your name and address.
Pete Carnes, 4811 Gordina Avenue, Manona. I just want to thank Jeff and Peter for their articles in the Manona Community Herald. They're very good. I just have a question for Peter. Where did you come up with the 20? This was in the, let me just do the record. This was in the Thursday, October 18th, '18. It's actually the Herald Independent. I'm a few decades behind the curve.
Yeah.
And you said that we're 134th in educational cost and 29th in performance. Where did that come from, just out of curiosity? Is it from DPI? Is it from the NEA? Is it a weighted thing?
Yeah. You know, we're not, we're not known to have this discussion, but I, in the interest of, I can answer that question briefly, which is, those are downloaded, the latest data, the most recent available data from the DPI in terms of the spending and financial. And the 29th in performance is, was taken from Sunny's article that she quoted the previous week.
Okay. And where did she come up with her number?
Well, that was discussed in her article.
Okay, okay, I'll have to look. Do you know, was it a weighted thing? Or it was?
I don't know, and I can't respond on that.
Okay. And, um, just out of curiosity, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how did we go from the ninth I guess mil rate to only the 134th? What was the exact word?
Spending per student?
Yeah.
That is because the mil rate doesn't reflect our spending. The mil rate reflects the difference between our, what we're allowed, I'm sorry, the revenue limit and the aid from the state divided by the value of the property in the district. So it's not directly related to our spending per student.
How can it be such a huge variance, though?
I can't speak to the vagaries of the formula, but those are the numbers that come up with.
Because, you know, some people have said that, you know, we don't have enough big boxes, you know, maybe Manona's okay, but Cottage Grove, you know, hasn't exploded yet. But yet, per the Department of DPI, we seem to be a property-rich.
Correct.
And how is that, just out of curiosity?
How's, how's that what? Yes, we are a property-rich district, which means that our revenue per, that means that our state aid is low. On average, our state is typically a third of our total funding. Our operational spending, our revenue is, our aid is a third of that, which is very low for, it's three hundredths in the state.
And what would a larger district have? You know, would it be?
It depends on the property value.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna stop, because we're not known to discuss this.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'd be happy to take this discussion, questions offline and answer the question if you want to send me an email or something.
Yeah, I just saw that, and I thought, holy mackerel, what was the criteria they used? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, yeah. Thanks. All right. Next order of business, the consent agenda. I'd like to ask for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Moved in.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
Okay, we have four recognitions this evening. First, during halftime at last week's high school football game, Dr. Richard and Dr. Jim Shropshire were both honored with a distinguished service award for their collective 60 years of free metaphor coverage on the sideline of Manona Grove football home games. Dr. Shrop, Sr., started attending Manona Grove football games the first year he moved to Manona in 1957, joining Dr. Jerry Daris, who was the original MG team physician. And he covered the MG games along with his partners at Manona Grove Clinic until 1992, when Dr. Jim Shrop started covering with Dr. Shrop, Sr., with the help of their partners for 25 years. Altogether, that makes 60 years of a Shropshire, of a Shropshire, covering MG football as team physicians. And the Shropshires were proud to help out and serve the community as team physicians for the MG football program, and we are grateful for their dedication. I've had the pleasure of getting to meet Dr. Shrop, Shrop, as he's known, as you all know him, Senior. I honestly, I wasn't aware of that history, and I'm sure some of you were. But certainly, a well-deserved recognition, and we're very pleased to have honored them at last, at last game.
And I would like to add, I just think it's wonderful. It would have been nice to know I had, so again, some of us would have been involved. Having been family involved in the clinic, and also having covered, and family covered the football games, you can't imagine how difficult this is. I mean, he'd have to call two ambulances, and they would be, they were absolutely phenomenal. And we don't have any history of having any students that weren't well evaluated in this environment, so I mean, that's really pretty good.
Okay. Secondly, the high school recently hosted a female athlete summit. This event provided female student athletes with the opportunity to connect with one another and talk about important topics in sports, such as how they can apply what they learn in their, in their sports to their teams, life after sports, and also how they can take a leadership role on the teams. And those of you that were on the board last year, I believe we, you know, Mr. Schreiner had reported out a little bit about that previously. Again, one of those programs we're very proud of and to provide those opportunities for our, our student athletes. Winaco School recently celebrated National Farm to School Month by participating, participating in the Great Apple Crunch, with over 1.5 million students in the region. The Manona PTO provided apples to the students for that project. And there's a link in your board docs to a little bit more information. And then lastly, again, many of you are aware, Forever Friends recently hosted their annual Halloween dance party for all district students, and their next meeting will be November 5th, in which they will, in which they will celebrate the cultures of India. So I did not have an opportunity to event, attend, but I understand that we had great participation from students district-wide.
Yeah, just to add that no students or adults got injured dancing.
Didn't have a doubt.
And the DJ was excellent.
No, the dude sat here.
Oh, yeah, that was the DJ, that's right.
All right, thank you. Any other? The State Education Convention, correspondence and announcements?
Yeah. So just a reminder, the registration hasn't opened up yet. We're aware of the dates, and so Joyce has been able to secure the hotel reservations. Those are always a hot kind of, commodity to make sure we get early on. And so even though we can't register yet, if you happen to know, if you're not going to be able to attend, to let Joyce know now as she prepares for that. But otherwise, the registration will be out very soon, and she'll be sending out reminders to you about that as well.
Thank you.
Do you just want to add, there's, in particular for the new board members, on Tuesday, there's a pre-conference in the afternoon. So that means if you do that, that's an extra night.
Well, we have those nights anyway, because that's how she has to reserve.
Oh, she has to reserve the room?
Right.
Okay.
So what it means going in the afternoon, and I would just add to that, that one of the things that they offer every year is one on school finance, which is always excellent.
It's, um.
And there are, there are four different choices, and they take the, I mean, they're always very, very good.
Yeah. So when the registration comes, I'll remind everyone, yeah, make sure, it's more than just saying I'm going, you do need to go through, and there are some optional events that you can register for.
Yeah, that's optional, so it's an extra point.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Then the superintendent's report.
Okay. If you don't mind, I'm going to kind of go in reverse order here and start with the ACT scores. And this is a notification we get directly from College Board, and I thought I'd share with you, because it just came in last week, and it's, you know, usually in the news media, so scores you should see. Just want to point out that these ACT scores are not identical to the ones that are associated with our school report card. As you know, all juniors in the state take the ACT. Our juniors have done it for years. Now the entire state does it as part of their, their measurement. But then, of course, our college-bound students or non-college-bound can retake the test, and then we get a, a final score for our graduating seniors. And usually that score is a little bit higher, because some, the scores, you know, go up during that time. So the report that I just shared with you is on the senior report. And it still shows the comparisons to, you know, state averages and so on. But just wanted to point that out, that those are two different scores that are both reported out publicly.
If you took the test as a junior and not again, would it be reported?
It would be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you look at the comparison to the state, you can see, of course, when the state started mandating that all juniors took it, or take the test in 2016, you can see what that did to the, you know, state average at that time, where ours are much more consistent. And I would say, you know, looking at five-year, there's certainly some positive things to take away from there. We all know that we have to be careful in drawing conclusions with, you know, standardized, you know, tests, but all in all, you know, I think in particular in science, we've seen some growth, and hopefully we'll continue to track that over time, and it's one measure that we certainly want to look at. Okay.
Dan, I would also mention, another thing that might be helpful, particularly in the science area, is to go back and show maybe three years of ACT scores prior to the change to biology, chemistry, and physics, because this improvement is dramatic.
From going back further than five years.
Absolutely dramatic. The other factor that it's clearly taken us a while to adjust to is going to the goal of 100% participation. So the scores, you know, even eight years ago, not 10, but were affected by that, moving to 100%. And now you look at our scores and our percent participation, I didn't see that on that list, but it's relatively high compared to the rest of the major conference. I mean, these are exemplary scores.
Do we have 100% participation, though?
No, close to. Close, I mean, there's some students that.
Because I opt out.
Right, that's, that's.
So we're now getting 100%, because I opt out.
Right.
No, not 100%. But, but, but the participation is similar to others now.
Well, now the whole state, yeah.
Yes.
And we saw the same effect the year we started giving it to all our kids, the scores dropping. It's been encouraging to see them build steadily since then, so.
And we've also worked in the middle school programming to help them be comfortable in that. So I think we're seeing good results.
Came in in the 80s, with the state graduation requirements, and those were adopted at the same time statewide. And to what extent does, do we, do we make any effort to align a curriculum to ACT or to use ACT the other way around, one way or the other? Or is it, is it simply incidental to our, our curriculum? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because, but, but most schools in the state don't go out to align their curriculum to the ACT. But it tends to be more approximate to what schools teach than, than the other national exam.
You know, and that could be a much longer discussion. I would say that we work hard to be aware of what's on the ACT, and, and, because clearly as much as, you know, in most cases, we're, we're aligning our curriculum to what we think is, is important, and that what we end up with with state mandated tests, you know, are what they are. ACT, of course, is something that is required for our college-bound students. And so the scores have a little bit more, quite a bit more significance, you know, than some of the others. So to say that we don't at all look at that, I don't think would be fair to say we're completely aligned. And, and again, I think that's something we could, I could probably, you know, Paul and Lisa could probably speak to, you know, much more detail about how we look at that, but I, I can say that it's something that we're aware of.
Yeah, I know, several years ago, when we were working with Chuck Benagoni and the Align by Design, I mean, part of the point, the ACT tests are skill-based, basically, so there are skills, and there was an effort to embed skills in, more purposefully in teaching. So to that extent, it, that was influenced by measuring that test, so it's, because the, they do, over time, they, they have been shown to be skills that kids do need when they go on to post-secondary opportunities. So it's not content that you're aligning, but it's the skills.
You said it much better than I.
Well, I, that was coming in right when I got on the board, and I was real excited about it, because I thought it made, it was the first time I ever saw standardized tests making sense, and, and the use of them. I thought that, that what we pulled from that, and I think our teachers are still using some of that.
So, anyway, the purpose that I shared it, because these do get reported out publicly and in the media, so I thought it was important that you're aware of those scores.
I, I just wanted to comment on that, to some extent, because the, the ACT was adopted back in the 80s, along with the minimal graduation standards, and there was a significant debate on whether to use that or the Metropolitan test, or the, what's the other one?
SAT.
SAT.
SAT. And I remember that at DPI, we did, we did a, we made a sample of, or kinds of school districts to do what Susan suggested generally. It's not aligned to a generic curriculum, but it, but the, we found that that was much more aligned to what is taught in science than the, than two or three of the other tests. That's why I think Milwaukee, I think they dropped the Metropolitan test, they were using that one for it.
Yeah, there was a period when Milwaukee and Manona Grove were the only two districts that were having all their kids take the ACT. That was a few, a few years before the state adopted.
No, we did it, so the state did it in 1450.
We did it.
We did it when Bill Brysh was still here. So that would give you an idea of that.
At least by 2007, six, seven, we were doing it.
Yeah, 10 years, close to 10 years.
And Milwaukee does also, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, the second item was listed, the referendum communications update. You can see the list of the number of things. So I'll just point out a couple pieces. First of all, this morning, we had another donors with Dan session. Appreciate, Jeff Simpson attended. We had seven community members that attended, and, and that was really good. We actually stayed for about two hours. And I think anytime we have an opportunity to engage in discussion with constituents is, is a good thing, so. So we had that, and then a couple other things that are coming up now as we approach the, the election day, is with the media. We actually had both the State Journal and Channel 3 contact us today, and so we'll be following up with some interviews with them the next couple days, and so we'll keep going through these last.
Any issues arrived in your?
Oh, thank you for asking that. And so then the other thing I wanted to point out, and I, we just added this, I think at the end of the day yesterday, so you may not have had a chance to read it yet, on your board docs, one of the things that we've had on our website is that people can, you know, email, you know, additional questions or phone in. And so there are 11 of them that we've received, and so we've copied for you those questions as well as the responses, you know, that Katie has prepared to those. So some of those are very much aligned to some of the things we're already in our FAQs, and others, a little bit different twist to some of the questions. So if you haven't had a chance to read, please take an opportunity to read through those, you know, as well.
Look at it, I think it's a great document. Thank you very much.
Where are those emails?
They're attached.
Under superintendent.
Other report?
Yeah, referendum email to you.
Oh, yeah. Looks good, thank you.
So.
Small.
Okay. All right. And then the last item, which is listed first with the report, the mental health work group update. And we were contacted by Dane County Executive, Joe Precy's office, a week or two ago, about, he wanted to attend an upcoming board meeting and talk a little bit about his budget, and particularly one of the programs where they partner with schools called building bridges. And so we've had some discussion about that in the past. You've heard Krista and her team report out on the work of our mental health work group. And so I include for you in board docs, just an excerpt from an email, you know, that describes a little bit about the program, and, and as well, Krista did a great job putting together a memo about the, an update with regard to our work with our mental health work group, as well as where this program could fit in. And so, so Dane County Executive Precy did include additional funding in his budget for this upcoming year. Now, we have not been approved for the program, in fact, we haven't, we've had discussions about that, but there is an allocation, so he'll speak to that a little bit. And as Krista stated, her memo, memo, we're much well, better positioned now to perhaps utilize this program. Do you want the board to be aware that there is a significant cost? It's a matching program, and so it does cost the district, it would cost $68,000 to participate. But we are, at this point, it's not been finalized, but in Jared's budget, we are, and it does, excuse me, for a year from now, okay? So it's not this year's budget, but at this point, we're tentatively planning on moving forward.
Dan, you said we haven't been approved for the program. It's, it was my impression, maybe I missed a step here, I'm sorry if I did, but when, when I saw Joe Precy, he indicated that we hadn't applied to the program. So it's not that we haven't been approved, we hadn't made this step, we haven't applied.
Sure, we've made contact with the appropriate, you know, people with that.
Did we go through the application?
There's not an actual application process right now. Okay, so we're waiting, we're, we're in the process of having that dialogue. Okay, he, and he'll speak to this, you know, when he addresses the board, but he is, the first step is to have the budget allocation, okay, moving forward.
Okay. Because he specifically said to me, as a board member, why haven't you applied?
Not recently.
And I just, and Krista gave me the answer to that, and I knew that I'd respond after that.
A year or two ago, correct?
It was a year ago.
Yeah, yeah. So since then, we have been in contact.
Is Precy's proposals, or is it hardware stuff, or?
Staffing.
Staffing, yes.
Yeah, it's not.
It's specifically staffing and time and energy. It's almost, the similarity is almost ideal if you could do it your way, you'd put a clinic in your facilities, but you can't afford to do that. So this is definitely just a stopgap. It doesn't do the whole thing, but it does it. If you call Lynn Green, who's head of Dane County Human Services, and say, how?
Retired.
What?
She's retired. Did she retire? Didn't she retire?
Nope, not yet, but I'm sure.
I agree with you, though.
She, when you talk to her and you say, how do we receive Dane County services? And this was before Joe Precy really started moving his, his, his building bridges forward. And actually, we have active people living in Manona who are working in that program in Madison right now. Basically, she said, here's how you do it. You file a police report. And I said, so you're telling me the only way I can get help for a child in mental health? And Krista has done so much in two years for this district. It's phenomenal, and you don't come and take kudos for it, but from where you started to where we are now, it's the continuous improvement model. It's absolutely amazing. And it's also been, and I guess I probably didn't mention this, but it's also been a huge asset in listening to you talk about what you're doing, in the commitment to expanding the Meriter Unity Point Children's Psych Hospital, because it's full, and if you need to admit a child to psychiatric services, which are built and maintained for children, there aren't any, except that one, and it's full. So to try and build the bridge and fill the gap has been huge, and I really appreciate everything that's on.
So again, hopefully, you know, the information, the memo and the other stuff that is attached will provide the background information, so that when you hear from Mr. Precy, you know, at the next meeting, they'll have the background information, and he'll speak to that.
All right. That it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. Teaching, Equity Committee here.
We met this last week, 17th, I think.
Seventeenth, yeah.
Yep, and we had 19 community members apply, and two teachers apply to be on the board. We made a selection of nine total members, with seven community members and two teachers. And we just sent out notices to all those people. Our next meeting is November 7th at 6:30 here at the Roadhouse. I thought we had an excellent pool of applicants in the committee, and everyone would have been a fantastic addition or to contribute to the committee, so.
Oh, a great pool of applicants. I want to thank everybody who applied, even those that weren't selected. There was a lot of debate about, relative merits wasn't anybody, it was good, just, we didn't think was well-qualified, in terms of picking from some great, a great pool of applicants. So even if you weren't selected, we do appreciate your allocation and your commitment to the district.
Absolutely.
How did you guys come up to that, with that number?
With nine?
Yeah.
We had, I think the process that we used is, we went through each applicant, and we didn't really have a, a set number that we wanted to find. I think we, we got to nine, we were really happy with that, those, that number and the people on the committee that we chose. We thought that would be a really good group representative of the committee, so, you know, there wasn't really a specific number in mind. I think it, it had to do with, once we had the people that we thought were going to be great candidates. But like Peter said, there were, we had, we were, I was very impressed with the amount of applications that we got, and everybody that took the time to apply, so.
I think we ended up with more members than we initially thought we're thinking, because there were so many good people to choose from. And also, and another thing that turned, we looked at the balance of communities and diversity of the, of the applicants, to try and reach a group that's well-balanced.
I think it speaks to the hunger of our community to, to really address this issue.
Okay. Thank, I'm sorry, Susan.
I was, and I'll ask for this later, but for those who attended the WSB meeting last night, a major theme that, that John Ashley had was equity and the definition, the WSB kind of global definition of equity. And I, I think that would be a great, we can give John slides a great resource tool for the committee. It was extremely well-done and well-received.
Just, because, because you raised that point, it was something like equity is about providing what all our students need, and not, and not just talking about subgroups, but all of our students. And that, and we talked about that a little bit at the committee meeting, too. This, this is a, a broad-based committee with equity as, as a major thrust of it, in that it's a thrust of all of our greater efforts, so, anyway, yeah.
Thank you. Community engagement. Jeff?
Well, in a good meeting, we discussed first crisis communication and what people thought about that, kind of resolved what I thought it would be, which is what my thought is. Everybody wants to know everything at once, and nobody, and we don't know everything at once. And it was coupled with the shooting on the bus with our infinite campus problems. So that kind of snowballed into, I need more information, so we're trying to send you information, it's not going anywhere, so. So we just, I mean, there, I don't know if there was a good answer to that, really? It's just, I wanted people to understand, you know, it's all over social media, like, oh, nobody's telling us anything, you know? And the idea is, you know? Talked a little bit about the referendum, but I think people are starting to get referendum doubts. We talked about bringing Will soon to kind of go over everything he does and how we can best utilize that to the district. And we talked about a big priority is going to be reaching parents that don't normally get involved with our district, and not just parents, but.
Community.
Community members, yeah. So that's, we're going to hit that hard in the next meeting. And then at the end, we talked about fundraising, and kind of that's, I thought that was where it would be, too, all over the board, is I didn't want to sell our district to, let it go. So, so we're going to have to dig into that a little bit deeper, too. So I just kind of threw that out there to see what people think, and look at how many different people are in this, are in the committees, differing opinions, so.
Have you looked at, oh, I'm sorry, Susan, have you looked at what we currently do relative to fundraising? I mean, we have a lot of booster groups essentially.
Right, right. This, I just threw that out there, just to, to get the idea planted, and we'll, we'll dig a little deeper into that as we go, so.
And my question was just, when you talked about trying to get more people involved who are not involved, that was part of what we worked on last year, and I'm just wondering if you're going to use some of that.
Yeah, we'll get some.
The matrix of groups that we talked about, and, I mean, those lists, because I noticed they were in the board docs during the meeting, and I'm hoping you'll build on some of those efforts, so.
Like I said, we're going to hit it hard next meeting, so. The first meeting was get to know everybody, because this one was kind of a, let's throw some who's out there, now we're going to hammer some of their stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Sure, Susan.
Jeff, I think it's great, particularly in that environment, that you can, you know, keep the community informed about things that we're doing as fundraising and issues. Is that basically what, because that, I missed that fair end. I thought your discussion about the communication at the beginning was just excellent. So what's kind of the plan under that? Because there's that kind of charge thing, but, under that fundraising piece.
I just wanted to see what people thought about fundraising.
Because that would be helpful, particularly for policy as well, to get any of that feedback. That would be great.
We're going to dig in a little deeper, but there are people that didn't want to really sell anything, and they're open to anything, so. Just got to dig in.
Selling things is only part of.
Right, 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 but, you know, it was a initial discussion.
Sure.
And a lot of people are worried about giving up control of the things, obviously. You know, I think even people that are willing to sell the kitchen sink are, have that concern also, you know, so. So let's get some more community feedback and see what else.
All right, thank you.
And we still have a goal of getting everybody in schools, and we started attacking that too.
Great. Personnel Committee, Dean.
Personnel met, and we basically discussed the bargaining with the teachers. And more pointedly, the dealing with the teacher compensation plan and the teacher requests to have some steps built in to, into that plan. And so I think we, I think basically, we came up with some options, but no set position, because we need to meet with the teachers at the next time, and set out some proposals. I think that the great part of our meeting, we had a, Jared did, I think, an excellent job of, of, well, let me backtrack a bit, because I think that one of the themes that constantly runs through our personnel is attracting, retaining our teachers. And, and, and one of the things that come up with bargaining is that the Monona Grove School District, according to the teacher proposals, are lagged behind in certain areas in, with other districts and so forth. But we've, we've also indicate that we are top of the line, pretty much, in the fringe benefits. And Jared's been working, I think, with most of the business managers and school districts in our comparables in Dane County, is that correct? Yes. And, and so Jared put together some, some very useful information, which, which I hope at the appropriate time, we might share with the board, that, the entire board, that deals with benefits across the, you know, across the district. And we are in very good position on the benefits area and that sort of thing, so. We're, we'll be presenting some form of that to, probably to the teachers in conjunction with the bargaining as well. So that was the essence of it, no, no fundamental decisions were made or anything like that. We just helped prepare ourselves for the next discussion with the teachers.
Didn't we make a decision about action on a particular proposed plan? Not within this budget, but to be considered?
Help, help me out.
Okay, Eric? The line by line?
You're the one that's saying it, what do you think?
The year, well, I just, there were basically three things that Dan had, that Mindy had brought to us. And one of them was consideration of the annual increase in salary.
Yes.
And there were numbers attached to that. And we had gotten an analysis on those numbers from.
Yeah, that, I think, you're asking for a little more detail of what we discussed on the bargaining.
What, where we left that? You said we haven't really made any decisions, and we did kind of, just time-wise.
Well, I think, I think basically, I think it would be no surprise to anybody, particularly the teachers, to indicate we're looking at having a couple of steps in the green area, the third step, that would have some predictable salary at those areas. The teacher proposals have largely been to have it much, much more frequent than three areas across there. We were looking at a couple of five-year steps in there, but, so that's what we'll be presenting.
Didn't we, we approved the 10 and 15?
So.
We approved 10 and 15.
Yeah.
But that ended around for a while, we hit, so.
Right, but that was all part of it. That's what he's talking about right now, is that we talked.
It's part of our general preparation, where it was the 10 and 15, and.
But the position, there was a position on the committee about the annual for this year in that meeting. We specifically talked about that.
Which was?
Okay, so it was my understanding, and Eric helped me, that based on the financial analysis of the plan proposed and the yearly plan, we want to be able to discuss that and continue discussion. And we all agreed on that, on the yearly plan. And whatever year bumps, we talked about three-year bumps, we talked about five-year bumps. But financially, the yearly increase as proposed was not financially feasible for the district. Is that correct, Jared? That's what you reported to us at the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, and I think the minutes will reflect that. So that, that plan isn't feasible for the district for this year? Is that, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we decided to, we talked about the teachers have proposed annual, annual increases as the traditional teacher salary schedule, and we've, we've discussed, I don't think it's a surprise to them when we come back either, that we would have a couple of five-year ones in there, which we presently have the 10 and 15 years in, in that category. So I think that's what you're talking about, Susan.
That's exactly right. I just wanted, because there was, well, you didn't talk about it at all, you didn't talk about.
If you don't mind, I'll take a crack at that.
You did, yeah.
So.
I'm not sure, I don't want to.
Yeah, so we've had discussions for quite some time, and we've heard about the idea that under our current compensation plan, there's a degree of uncertainty about what sort of salaries teachers might receive in the future. And so certainly, under a traditional salary schedule, you know exactly what it is, but we also know that the challenge with that is not knowing, with the uncertainty about whether you can afford to pay those annual, you know, steps. And so what we focused on is we agreed that it would be good to have some benchmarks of minimum salaries for teachers with 10 and 15 years of experience. So there are some numbers that people can see, I know I'm going to get at least this salary at those points. So we've agreed upon that, the committee has agreed at this time to use that as a starting point. So what we're really looking at now is, well, what should those salaries be? We know what they are currently, so that's where we're really trying to look at the comparables, about what would our goal be for those salaries, and then comparing that to what we think we can afford, which we don't know until the next state budget comes out. And so one of the things that Dean mentioned, when we looked at the benefit piece, Jared did give a very comprehensive report about what specifically our healthcare benefits cost. That actually, we did attach to the board docs for the entire board, that document. So when you look at that summary, that shows the comparable, and you see those numbers of the other districts, that's how much more we are paying than those districts are for the FTE that we have. And so that's one of the considerations that we've talked about, is everyone has, you know, that idea that, do we want to continue having those very strong benefits? Understanding that means less money available to put to salaries. And so that will be the conversations that we continue to have moving forward. Is that fair?
I would, I would direct everybody's attention to that, the comparable data.
That's what I thought I said.
Yeah. Yes, the comparable data that helps, that's in your board docs.
Yeah, thank you for providing that.
It's actually in the board docs.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, there's two components of it. One is the cost of the plan that we provide, and the other is that the contribution the district makes. And those add up to a fairly substantial difference in cost to district.
Actually, could Jared, could we just take two minutes and just tell, tell the board what the three documents are? And the meaning that you found in those for us?
Sure.
Just because it is very valuable to that whole teacher compensation conversation. And since the documents are there.
I'll start with the last one, it's the staff to student ratio. So we've selected two employee groups. The first colored graph that's on that page is actually teachers. And specifically, when we're looking at teachers that, last year, 1202, and so the source of data that we received this information from was DPI 1202 and working with Forecast Five. And as Dean mentioned, Dane County Business Managers and Human Resource Directors, we get together, and we've identified areas that we want to be able to collect. Once Act 10 had it implemented, obviously, collective bargaining agreements went away, so we were no longer able to collect a physical document from every district and be able to, you know, compile that. So, and then DPI has to submit our 1202, which is a staffing report in November. But it's typically a really, really long time before every, all of the airs get ironed out, which is for a good reason, because obviously DPI analyzes it, reaches back out to the districts, districts then obviously determine if they, if there was an error, if they need to correct something. So there is some back and forth, so that's part of the reason. So what we've been able to do is, at the same time that districts submit our 1202 reports to DPI, we're able to submit that to Forecast Five, which is a data company that we work with, we're on the budget side, and they're able to put together these charts for us. So specifically, this is just teachers, and trying to be able to compare apples to apples. DPI does have different categories that you submit, so this does not include school sites, social workers, library media specialist, school nurse, because those are individuals that are not truly in the classroom. However, they do help serve students, but when we're really looking at student to staff ratio, we want to make sure we're looking at classroom teachers as much as possible. So that's what the first one is. And then the bottom chart is actually our educational assistance. Educational assistance sometimes is a little bit more challenging to give. We can't extract necessarily that data from other districts to say that these are special education versus regular education. And as we all are aware, the special education, educational assistance are really driven through the IEP process, which is something that we are required by law to provide, if that's what's, the group has found fit for that child, to serve that child's needs. So sometimes, those numbers are not always apples to apples to districts, but that's a starting point for us to collect, to be able to give you that information. The other two documents are related to health insurance. The, one document that is a two-pager that is called Associated Benefits Health Insurance Grid. We work with Associated Financial, so when the district decided to make this change from employee trust funds, we work with Associated Financial, who works with the majority of all of Dane County schools on health insurance benefits. They're able to negotiate contracts, send out the request for information, and help the districts walk through that process. So what they've been able to do for us is put together all the districts that they work with in southern Wisconsin. So you'll see there are districts that are outside of Dane County. But it just breaks down if they have a single plan, what that plan is, or if they have a dual choice plan, what that looks like, some of the high-level benefit levels, and then what the contributions are. Then the document that I was able to pull together from not only that information, but then also for Dane County schools, is what we call the Health Insurance Comparable Dane County Financials. So looking at the schools in Dane County that we typically use as comparables when we're looking at salaries. So what I've listed there is pretty much a summary of what you'd also find on the Associated Benefits. So the first two couple of columns are obviously the district's name, the percent that the employer pays, broken down by single and family. And then the very right column is, the column that is probably the most useful data for us, is, what I did is I took our sense of, senses of all our staff that have health insurance, their FTE, and applied every school's premiums, if we had their premiums, and that the percentage that they had, that number shows you the difference that we would be paying as a district. If we took, for example, the first one was the Forest. If we applied the Forest's premiums to our staff at the current level that our staff have, you would see that numbers, the savings that would go back into our budget, that the board then could be able to direct elsewhere, such as potentially salaries. As the Personnel Committee continues to explore this in further detail, we need to continue to look at total compensation. Obviously, it's very important that we, and it's easy to get total salary, but we need to look at total compensation. So if we, if we happen to be paying, as an example, potentially $1,000 more for health insurance, but we're $1,000 less on salaries, there's potentially a difference there. However, it still is what's best for our district and our staff. And our staff might choose that they would like to have a higher benefit level, but we just need to make sure that that conversation is out in front, and we have that. And that's what we'll continue down the path with Personnel.
And I think this data is just excellent for that discussion to have, because there, there is a pretty close relationship in that data of money going into health benefits and other things that alternatively could be in salaries. So, you know, I hope, Dan, that we could, that maybe a subsequent board meeting, maybe after we've chatted with the teachers, you know, one more time, that Jared could put the big board down, could, could put that data up and discuss it and. I think it's very enlightening to the committee.
Okay, thank you. Next, possible action items. And the first is the date and time of the 2019 annual meeting, and you're suggesting a departure.
Yeah, so we have had discussion about this. We've always, since the last several years, just kind of done the status quo about the first week in October, and thought it'd be worthy of a discussion, at least to consider a possible other date. And one of the things that kind of got us talking about it is, every year, Jared has to rush out of here afterward. That's when the state convention, fall conferences for the business officials. And so we kind of talked about, well, why do we do it the first week in October? And so we did go back and look historically at the district, and see that that's been the case, you know, since 2009. But before that, there were some other dates. So clearly, things changed with the state budget process about the timing of when they get information to us and so on. But when, in talking to Jared about this, you know, the reality is, there's no new information that he presented at the annual meeting in October, they didn't have already in July, when we did our preliminary budget. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jared to talk a little bit more about the timing of those, when we receive that information, and so on.
So as you're all aware, the board approves the preliminary budget by June 30th. So we then pretty much go all summer with really not having updated information, other than July 1st, when we have the eight estimate that comes in, which we do know is going to fluctuate. But really, the numbers start coming in for us the third Friday of September, the first day of October, and then the 15th of October. So for example, when we map this out, the board approves the preliminary budget. When we really do start getting numbers that we could be updating our budget, we've already had to send our budget publication to the Herald Independent a week before that. So once you've sent that publication, you've pretty much stuck with what you need to present at the annual meeting and budget hearing. I mean, you could update the community on that, but that's not what you've really published. So the thought, and so for example, like if we continue to have the annual meeting the first Wednesday of October next year, we'd actually have to submit our budget publication on Friday the 13th. However, we have a whole other week before the third Friday is next year. Then our October 2nd would be the annual meeting dates, potentially. October 1st is when we would get updated property values, if they're on time. Typically, they're not. And then we still have to go through October 15th. So if we were able to take the budget that is approved on June 30th, and then we just roll that over like we typically do, instead of waiting three months to present to the community, we would then publish that the second week in July, and then have the annual meeting budget hearing the first week of August, which really, I do think the community would not necessarily get confused, because if they start hearing the public, these numbers are coming out, when we have a budget hearing the next day, they might expect to have some updated numbers that we technically could share, but we haven't run those numbers. So that's sort of the timeline and how the numbers truly affect. Looking back at the history, there was times where you had it closer to the end of October. Those would give you true numbers, where the, the community would get updated information. We would still be publishing our budget at the very last minute, so if there was any delay and giving us our final equalization, that's, the only thing that that's going to change is what's the mill rate potentially looking like. However, since we are in cash flow borrowing, we have to have our budget hearing no later than October 15th, in order for us to meet when we need cash. in order for us to meet when we need cash flow. So going beyond October 15th doesn't work for our cash flow borrowing situation. So it would make sense to move it up earlier. So then we are definitely keeping it, the budget is approved, or the preliminary budget's approved by the board in June. We go through our publications in the month of July, we present that information. And then obviously, we need to continue to work with Katie and share that information out as more information comes available for us through the month of September and October for when the board approves the final budget at the end of October.
Discussion, Dean?
It seems to me that, from my perspective, we ought to meet at a time when the, when you can have as much meaningful data to be presented without major changes afterwards and fit into all those factors that you have to deal with before and after, and tell us when we should meet.
I mean, I have no idea from all that you said when we should meet.
Sorry for being confusing.
Well, you sufficiently confused me.
That's your job.
That's your job, you did a hell of a job today. Just tell me when you want me to, want us to show up and when we can have the proper public information and you will have the best, the best data available.
To have the best data available for us would technically mean that we should be having our budget hearing this week, you know. However, that doesn't work because we are a cash flow borrowing district and we have to have our cash flow done by October 15th. Because we're already for two or three days dipping into debt service funds to balance the books, but we transferred those through. So instead of having it on October, later in October, I would suggest moving it up to August. It's not going to give us more information, but what it's going to do is we're not going to sit on a preliminary budgets for three months that we ultimately are presenting to the board approve in June.
Susan?
I think we should just, again, clearly we've done this before. I think you'll see though, that that first time that they were using the August, they did the 5th, and then the 17th, and 29th, and the 29th, trying to move it closer to where school is. There's a huge population that swims swim team. And they do all city the last weekend of July, and then everybody leaves town. So I just want to make sure that we don't plan it at a time which is the peak vacation week for the school families. They're trying to leave before school starts and before they have to come in and start doing all that. So again, you've got four, so you can, if that works for you, and you can do it.
Right, I mean, I think what we were looking at was the beginning of August based on when the other two board meetings were. I don't think we're necessarily stuck at the first week. I think that's a valid point, and I think that's why we wanted to ultimately have this conversation. Because we don't want to have it at an inconvenient time where people aren't on vacation. And people are going to take vacations throughout the year. However, if we know that there are a number of people that are going in and we're going to hear feedback that we can't make it, I mean, we obviously don't want to hide anything, we want to be as transparent as possible. So even if we decided to move it to the last week of August, or, I mean, some districts actually have their annual meeting budget hearings before a regular board meeting. Or at least the budget hearing portion, and then they have a different date for the annual meeting, so.
So we typically have one meeting in July, yep, and we're lucky to have that. So I don't know if July will work, but I'm open to any other day.
What would be the date in the last week of August? The Wednesday, it usually has to be Wednesday.
We typically have Wednesdays.
Well, our regular board meetings remember, 2nd, 4th, so I have probably a regular board meeting. So the open dates would be the 1st or 3rd.
Well, if we're not going to do it during football season, we can do it on a Monday night like we always used to.
You can do that too, because nobody's asking on Wednesday night.
We moved it because of a particular Monday night, Green Bay Vikings football game.
Seriously.
Really?
People were mad.
I'm concerned.
And they weren't even necessarily people who came to the meeting, but.
I'm concerned that we do have a relatively small number of people who do come to this. And that the people who do come would be looking for it in October. And, you know, I don't want to do anything to discourage attendance, I don't know when that falls.
You know, we talked about that a little bit, and you're right, we've had low attendance. And I guess that kind of, is it because of October, people are busy, schools are full swing? Would we get better attendance in August? I don't know, I mean, our job obviously would be to communicate out when it is, but.
We sat with heights, heights people, the heights, Wisconsin heights, and they had it, I think the night before when they had one person. And it was the Lake Mills people that had it in July, and I think they said they had seven people. So it's just an unattended event unless people are present.
Well, we do have some community members who do show up every year.
Right.
Susan?
Well, I, that's what I was going to say, I think the attendance, when we, we used to have it in the summer, because I remember those, generally it was pretty similar unless there was a hot issue. There are a couple of years where there was, and then we had a lot of people. But in general, I think, I don't think it's that hard to communicate out a date change. And my only thought too was having it a little closer to the beginning of the school year, just, you might catch more people. But if you wanted to avoid things like the all-city swim meet, I don't know, is that the very last week of August?
And then everybody leaves, that crew leaves town.
So, well, but, so if you did it like. If you did it the week, the second or third week and the weekend. And if you did it on a Monday, we could do it on a Monday and do it the same week as the board meeting.
So a barbecue.
And I'm looking at the August of this year, the 12th would be the second week of August, and the 14th would be the third.
It's going on, everybody will come.
The 12th, there's no better way I'd like to spend my birthday.
I set my birthday at any meeting, don't worry about it. It's the way it goes, yeah. I mean, I don't know if that makes a difference or not. I always think of August as a big vacation month too, so that's the only downside to that. But, so if you get it closer to the school year, I thought was maybe more people.
What about the first Monday in September after Labor Day? I don't hear any objections. Works for me. I don't like doing things in August.
Peter?
Yeah?
I'd move we have the annual meeting on September 9th.
Wow, that was decisive, I just want a little discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second, a discussion?
Is that a Sunday?
You're not going to be in Disney, are you?
After school started.
Right, and so there, so yeah, that way we have, have a friends.
Would anybody like to amend that to specify a location?
Do we have to do that now?
Wait a second.
Well, we do have to come up with a time and location.
Should we go back?
Should we do it at GDS?
Right.
Well, so that's the question, I mean, we have two possible. Last year we did a GDS, this year we did a Hiram Monano, should we move back to GDS? Any downside to doing GDS? What's that? Oh, it's Monday night, there's, it could be a Packer game.
Packers play, we don't care, it's curious. If there's a bear game, we can stream, we can stream it in.
Well, it was, it was the Packers Viking game, that's why it was a big.
No, it wasn't the Packers Viking game, it was the Packers Viking game where Brett Favre played for the Vikings.
Spent more time on this than student performance.
That's, that is correct.
We should be American.
Does anyone care about?
Set a date and time.
Should we do GDS again?
I'll amend it.
What were you going to say about?
So as regard to the, you know, live streaming, so I did confirm, we now can live stream from any location. It is a lot more work for our staff, they'd have to put all their equipment, you know, out to there, but it can be live streamed. The other consideration, you know, you don't have to go at 7 o'clock, you know, if there's a possibility of a football game, you can go at 6 o'clock.
Yep, good answer.
I would rather start at that 6 anyway.
Is that okay?
I don't, I don't want it to go too long.
The annual meeting still has a purpose, and there are some times where there, you know, things are very important. But with regard to the budget, obviously, it's all changed since 1993. Back when there were no revenue limits, it was much more important. That was the lecturer's opportunity to really have input on the tax levy. Now, you know, that is more of a moot point with the revenue limits in place. So the other issues are still there, but I think that's why you see in many districts, you know, as Jared mentioned, many districts now just do it, you know, like here, right before regular board meetings. It's a quick half hour meeting, get it out of the way and move on.
I suggest that last two words you have, or it would be a good one right now, move on.
I'd like to, somebody make a motion to amend the, a motion on the table, on the floor rather, to add the phrase "at 6:00 PM" on, at Glacial Drummond School.
I'd need that motion, didn't I kind of? I mean, have that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, the motion carries, so that we have the amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the main motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That was a tough one.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the lead, bro, Dean.
2018-19 budget. Jared?
All right, attached to board docs are two documents. One is the adoption per DPI requirements, and the other is our revenue limit worksheet, that's final. That gives you the, all the fund that we go through to determine how much we can really apply in the revenue limits. So the biggest things that I want to point out is we are having a general fund increase of $939,787 over last year.
What's the percentage change?
2.13%.
Thank you.
Which is right on with CPI, which is, I thought was interesting when we did the calculation. However, so in June, you actually approved a preliminary budget for general fund revenue is of $41,468,374. And this one is $41,527,659. So we are, we were off by $40,715.
You could do better next year.
Lower, next year we have to improve that.
You plotted that out pretty well.
I did. So obviously, we have a balanced budget, and that's part of the zero-based budgeting. Now that we have that, we'll be able to finalize all of the special individual locations where everything goes. But our expenditures will match that at $41,527. We had projected a 3% increase in equalization aid value. Actually, that came in at just shy of 4%, which you will ultimately on the next levy, on next agenda item be approving a mill rate and levy that equals $12.85, which is down from $13.22. In the document here, you'll notice that I did put together a, two graphs that shows you that our mill rate that will be a result of the levy that you approved tonight is that $12.85, which is below the 2010, 2011 mill rates that we had, that was at $12.92. The district that last year received in aid was $12,952. And this year we'll be receiving $13,333, which is an increase of $381,000 over last year. If you recall, the aid estimate that we had used for July 1st was $13,350,000. So that did come in a little lower, but it doesn't fluctuate that much like we've seen in the past. Usually it's plus or minus $20,000, $25,000, so.
What did the equalized value of the district change substantially?
Equalized value came in just shy of 4% increase. Last year we were at a... Last year we saw an increase of 2.82%. So we were going with a projection of 3% this year, but it actually came in just shy of 4%.
But the headline I heard you say for this budget is that the increase of 2.13% is a cost of living increase.
Yes. Other than that, the document that's in front of you, we just walked through. The first two pages is our general fund, which shows you the audited from '16, '17. We actually went through the audits, just not final, '17, '18, and then the budget, the dollar amounts. And then it walks through Fund 27, which is our special education funds. Similar setup to Fund 10, and then it walks through the other ones from Fund 40s, Fund 50, Fund 80, and then Fund 99. And just a reminder, Fund 99 does not have any impact to our budget. We are the fiscal agent for Dane County School Consortium. So that is funds that we collect from other districts to help run that. The portion that the district pays for is what you had approved in consent agenda at the previous meeting. Our portion for only our students to participate in that program. But overall, the percent, we're actually seeing our total levy decrease by a .08% from last year. So the total levy that would be spread out through, for property taxes will be $28,344,000. Any questions?
I'd like to comment apropos of the discussion we had earlier in response to the public comments. There's a four-page, I'm sorry, is this four pages long? There's a four-page long Excel worksheet that's attached to the board docs, and I think is available to the public.
Yep.
With a million different numbers on it, one of which is down at the bottom, is the levy rate. And the levy is determined by a complicated formula. It's, you know, you can oversimplify it the way I did. But we saw, we've seen a 30 cent, I'm sorry, yeah, 30 cents per thousand drop in our.
Yes.
In our levy rate from year to year. Our spending per student doesn't change to reflect that. This is simply the vagaries of the formula and the amount of state aid that's put into the, into the budget that changes that levy rate. It doesn't, does not impact the way we're spending on our students. Anybody else, any questions? Okay, so the new members, you need to study that spreadsheet because there'll be quizzes on it later. So we need to, a motion for approval of the 2018-19 budget as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the tax levy. Do you want to discuss that, you want?
Pretty much the same thing I just got done saying, because they sort of go hand in hand, obviously, of your budgets, but then leads to what the board ultimately has to prove to be sent to the municipalities. So right, embedded right into board docs are three charts or graphs. The first one is the proposed levy, and so that's what you're going to get off of the revenue limit of $28,344,000, which represents a .08% decrease from last year. Last year, we had saw a 2% increase over the year before. Then the proposed mill rate broken down by each of those funds, so general fund, Fund 10, we're looking at $9.70 per thousand dollars going to our general fund. Fund 38 is debt service, non-referendum, which is 29 cents. Fund 39, which is our referendum debt. And as we talk about the upcoming, upcoming referendum, if passed, that's where this, those dollars would end up going. So right now, we're at a $2.68 per thousand. And our Fund 80, community service, is at 18 cents per thousand dollars to give us a $12.85 mill rate for this coming property tax compared to last year's $13.35. And below that is a mill rate overview chart that goes back to 2010 and 11.
And I'd like to point out that we've seen a dollar, more than a dollar decrease in the last two years. We can all credit ourselves for all our hard work to do that now. Like I said, it's not, it's just the way the formula works out to do that.
Is the, but if property values go up though, the mill rate's lower, there's going to be more revenue, right? No, so if we have an increase in property value, we won't see any more revenue to the district. But it will, there's two things that will happen, it will lower the mill rate. Because the dollar amount, so the levy of $28,000, it will stay the same.
Yeah.
But spread it out. But where we do see shift in revenue at is if we get more property value, but we don't see any growth in students, we will actually lose equalization aid. Which then, even though we say that valuation could potentially drive down mill rate, it's sort of that magical formula, you want to see enrollment growth at the same time you're seeing valuation growth. Otherwise, we don't truly get that mill rate decrease.
Okay.
The question, you said that there's a .8% decrease in the levy?
Yes.
Is that across the district, or what about the two communities, any difference?
So it's our, it's, the $28 million is a decrease, the .08% is represented in our total levy that will be spread out to all.
.08?
Yep, point zero eight.
Okay.
So you could pretty much say that our levy is, stays as low as last year.
It's flat, okay.
Point zero eight changed the levy. Okay. Good. Essentially, the additional, that, I'm sorry, about a million, nine hundred thousand dollars in additional spending this year, is that right? What's the increase in the?
We have, we have an increase in our revenue of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, so that's pretty much, matches up with our revenue, our expenditures.
Okay. Good. Thank you. So I need a motion for approval of the twenty eighteen nineteen tax levy as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved and.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Discussion items, policy revisions. Susan, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so this is a first reading of these policies, and what we did, these are, are generally related to record requests, records and that type of thing, and we did consult with legal counsel on this as well, because when we read through them, we thought there was duplication, and so what you're seeing here is a recommendation to actually delete what's currently policy fifty-seven, eighty, because we picked up key paragraphs from that policy and put them into other policies, into, let's see, by dropping that one, we put some into policy twenty-four, sixteen, policy ninety-two, fifty, and eighty-three, thirty. So, if you look at fifty-seven, eighty, the way it appears right now in board docs, you'll see that the whole thing is stricken, except for these policies where it says to move. So there was some of the language we thought we just didn't need to have, and the language that you see here, not, without the strike through, tells you where it was moved, so it's a little complicated. But then if you go look at those individual policies, you'll see for student records, this gets complicated because there's yet another issue with this one. We took one of the policies out of that one we struck, and you'll see it in green here. Then after our policy committee met, Dan met again to go over some of the new Neola updates with our Neola rep, and he reviewed some of this and said we had missed an earlier revision from two thousand and sixteen, which added that same paragraph that we just added, but also added some additional language. So in your board docs, just to make this a little more confusing, down at the very bottom, if you scroll down, it's at there where it says update ten, twenty-three, eighteen. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom, it has the revised policy, and that's what we'd like to recommend. What the committee approved was, was the one without some of these changes, but these changes are explained. If everyone looks at that one now, you'll see it's striking some language, and that language is actually not in accordance with law, so that's why it's being struck. And then the additional language to the, the paragraph that follows that is just clarifying, and it's basically talking about students who have reached the age of majority, but are still dependent on their parents and what the parents' rights are in terms of getting access to student records is what this is dealing with. So it's just clarifying that and updating it. And then the next policy, so that's student records. Anybody have any questions on that one? And this, this is a little confusing, so hopefully, if you didn't look through it before the meeting, you'll have time to look at it more when you, after this, because we won't vote on it for two weeks.
I had one question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was just with the student, with the disability part at the bottom, and you said who, with the exception of a student with a disability who has been found incompetent in this state, wouldn't, wouldn't it be better to word that with the exception of a student who has been found to have guardianship in the state? Because that would assign guardianship to.
Can you tell me, we're still on eighty-three, thirty, right?
Oh, like eighty-three, oh, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I might be out of place here.
That's okay, I was just jumping ahead because I thought.
I'm looking at the first document, the student parent rights.
Okay, and that's the one we're proposing to delete, so we're not even going to have that policy anymore.
Oh, so you're deleting.
So we're deleting the whole policy, and we're just moving some of the key paragraphs to other policies.
Okay.
Because it was just, it seemed very confusing, there were all these, that's one thing we did find with Neola, and the one that jumps out at me is technology, there's like, I don't know, it seemed like ten technology policies, really, they need some cleanup, but we're leaving that to the technology people.
So that whole policy.
So that whole policy would be struck because we've picked up those paragraphs that aren't in red strike through and moved them to different paragraphs, so that still might, your question might still apply. I'm just going back to it.
Right, so the, even if you're going to move to ninety-two, fifty.
Right. Okay, so you're looking at the last.
The last part, yeah. The process with the state is that the state assigns guardianship for that student.
Right.
I just don't like the word incompetent there.
But there has to, legally, there has to be a finding of incompetency before guardianship. So I can assign a guardianship for a variety of reasons, and it, and one of those would be incompetency. The parents could die, and I'm going to assign guardianship. This, the way the statute is written, it's specifically related to that statutory finding.
Right, but we could just, we could just say state appointed guardianship, though.
No.
Well, you could, oh, I'm.
For different reasons.
Could you say, because I'm sure this is statutory language is why it's written this way, but I'm just wondering if you could say has been found, what would you say, eligible for or required to have?
No, it's a statutory finding with very specific criteria in it. You go to.
It might get messier to, yeah, to take the language off.
Guardianship, a guardian can be appointed for a child even when they have two parents. I mean, guardianship can be appointed for a whole variety of reasons. This isn't talking about the guardianship issue. It's talking about.
Yes, it is. For someone with a disability.
That's part two. That's part two.
Okay. I have a problem with the word competent. I don't think it's, whether that's the state language or not.
I appreciate that.
And, and I think, with that question, what we're referring to is a student that has a disability that is either, one, their own guardian, or two, that they, their parents have gone to court and the state has appointed their parents or someone else as a guardian because they've determined them to be, as written here, incompetent in the state. But I don't want to argue about it, I just want to know.
Yeah, it's just the first reading, right?
Right, it's the first reading, so I'd be willing to go back and look at it.
See if you can find.
And look at the legal language and see if there's a way to.
There may be, like, courses that uses better language for the same statutory.
Is it something that a court judges?
Yes.
Maybe it's not, it sounds like a derogatory term in general, but I think, I think it's a.
It's a statutory term.
It's a statutory judgment, but I, I understand Eric's point, too.
Right, right.
Yeah, I do, too. That's why, we can go back and.
Yeah.
We can look at it again and see if there's something that's appropriate to change.
So.
As long as the general meaning is the same.
Sure, sure. I appreciate the thought, yeah.
You might want to put in, if you have to use the word, you might want to put it as determined by a court, or something like that.
Right, that's what I was thinking, there might, there might be a way to just tweak the wording a little bit to make it more powerful. I got.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're going to have, we all need to just look at it again, so should we look at it at the closed session to go over it and then?
No, it wouldn't be eligible for closed session. It has to be an open session topic, but we can look at the statutory wording again and see if there's a way to rephrase it and bring it back possibly, with different wording, yeah.
But it's a very specific statutory exception.
Right, so it may be that's.
Without using the statutory language, there may be, it may open a door that allows a push to have that person deemed at eighteen, they have certain rights that they normally don't have because we didn't use the statutory language. Again.
Yeah, we just want to make sure it covers what the statute says you have to do. That's the bottom line.
If it's a statutory, specific language, it's kind of like you can't change HIPAA because HIPAA's. You can't change that, so, but we'll look, and that's a good point.
All right, so, well, since we brought that one in, I mean, this is going out of order a little bit, we could look at ninety-two, fifty then, because we took three paragraphs out of this policy and put them at the end of this one.
Sure.
And you, that's where you'll see them all, Eric, and that's where, that's where we'd make the change to that one, because this is the one we're keeping.
But the other thing is, I'm not seeing the statutory references on this.
Yeah, they're not on here, I just noticed that as well.
Well, we should be able to.
We need to add those.
You should be able to be able to just look at that, hit the link, and see the statute and know where to wait whether or not.
And that, we just missed that because, because these weren't in this current policy. The statutes seem to be added, so. Couple changes they have to go to that, and if it doesn't, for now, ready for a second read, next time, we can just postpone, but we'll see.
Sure.
Because I don't think we're meeting again between now and then.
We're just doing a plan.
Yep. But, well, you kind of do want to have them all done at the same, if you're going to delete that one policy, we do want to make sure we're covered, so we do want to do it at the same time.
I guess what I would say is, this was reviewed by a legal counsel, I would recommend we don't change any language without.
I wouldn't without checking with them, so, yeah.
So, I'll go back to follow-up.
Yeah, okay. All right, then, so that takes care of that one, and, so the student record went, I'm sorry, back to eighty-three, thirty was what we were looking at before we jumped into that one, and this one, the only changes we're suggesting, again, if you scroll down to the bottom, you see that the new change would be the way to look at this one. And these aren't, this is not really a substantive change, it's just adding this policy about students do have the right to, if they make a written request, to restrict their parents' access to information if they are adults, if they've reached the age of adulthood, and that's what that talks about. So that's it, we're just adding that paragraph. Otherwise, we're not changing that policy from the way it was before, other than to strike the language that's not legal. Okay, so then that takes us to ninety-one, thirty, which is public requests, suggestions, or complaints. And that one does have a significant change from the way we've done it in the past, mostly, well, it's adding guidelines for matters regarding human growth and development, is some new language. And then we've altered the policy regarding matters regarding instructional materials, and that's all printed there, so if you haven't had a chance to read that, you definitely need to read that. It does change the process. I don't know if anyone has questions about that now, or if you want to.
Just to be clear, the process that we went through the last year with the Killemar Rockingford-related complaint, this policy, as we, as now adopted, lays out that, that process, where we go to a committee, a committee review will review it, and then, and then superintendent makes a recommendation, and then there's, there's a, it's a, I, a board review, so that's the process we went through. There may be a board review. That's the process we went through. The revision to this policy essentially gives responsibility to superintendent to, to provide some criteria, but in general, to come up with a process and revise, drive the process or review of this, those superintendences.
Right. So it's not as definitive, it directs the superintendent to come up with a process.
Any discussion on that? Is there, did you have something else to say about the policy?
Not really, unless people have questions about it.
Questions or discussion on the policy?
Again, I've got the statute right here, one fifteen, eight oh seven, transfer of parental rights at age of majority, or a child with a disability other than a child with a disability who's been adjudicated incompetent in the state, which is age of eighteen, and then it's a legal definition.
Yeah, no, I think it might be hard, that's, jumping back to that policy, it might be hard to make that change, but we will look at it, so. So anyway, sticking to this one for the moment.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the, she's in ninety, thirty, I mean, I believe the, the board has a role to represent the community values, and I understand the review process, and that may be the end of the process, but I'm concerned about removing the board role all completely from that process. I'm also concerned the language stays in there, which is, no material subject to complaint may be removed or withdrawn solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some, and I don't know why we have special protection for offensive material, where we don't have protection for any other kind of, if somebody complains on any reason other than offensive, then it may be, may be reviewed, but if it's offensive for some reason, that would be magically not subject to review, and I don't understand why that language would be in there. Offensive, I mean, I think it could be, there could be a finding that, yes, the material is inappropriate because it's offensive, but we can't, if we make that finding, we could not remove the material, and I don't understand why that, we have that exemption, exception.
Well, the wording is, no material subject to a complaint may be removed or withdrawn solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some. So to me, that's a very valuable sentence to have in there, because you can have widely varying, I mean, we heard criticism of our social studies curriculum, I mean, you can have all kinds of political views, religious views, all kinds of things, where you individually don't like something, and that's why we always have an opt-out for parents for whatever the material is. There are other options, but to say that we'd remove something because that's for that, for just that reason, I mean, that's, I go back to the first, that's why we have the First Amendment, is to protect unpopular ideas and unpopular thoughts, and I think that, that's where my brain goes when I see a sentence like that. I think it's very important to have that sentence in there, so I have a hard time removing it.
I don't need time to read this over fully.
My other concern is that it doesn't lay out a process, and I, you know.
We, we had moved away from doing that, and so what we do, if you want to do that, we can.
But it doesn't suggest that.
Ask for administrative guidelines.
Right, but I think the, when we do that, the policy usually says we'll develop administrative guidelines. This policy doesn't.
That's right.
Doesn't say anything about that.
So if that's a thought.
And I have no problem with the process being administrative guidelines, but the policy does not require.
You want more specific process.
Do you have a thought on that?
Right, the issue is that, because of the apples of case, if you dictate administrative guidelines, now it's also subject to open meetings laws.
What's subject to open meetings laws?
The entire process.
The process.
We should be transparent, anyway.
I don't, I don't see why that's an objection to the policy.
Right.
I mean, I think we should strive, it should be as transparent as possible.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't, I don't like rewriting policy just to avoid transparency, that doesn't seem, open record draw, that doesn't seem appropriate to me. I mean, open record draws have a purpose, a reason.
How would you propose, what kind of change would you propose?
Well, the, the proposed change is simply that a person would, and I don't know if we'd have a form or not, we didn't talk about whether we'd have a form or not, but that they would object, typically, what happens if people have an objection about instructional materials, they talk to the teacher first, and frequently, it gets resolved at that level, teacher and principal, that's usually where those things get resolved. If it, if it isn't resolved at that level, what this policy says is, the request for inspection of such instructional materials regarding, suggestions regarding materials or complaints related to such materials shall be submitted in writing to the director of instruction, and then it simply says they'll include the author, title, publisher, section, page numbers, items, reasons for the complaint, similar to the last language, and then upon receipt of the complaint, the director of instruction shall attempt to resolve it through direct informal discussions and other means, so again, meeting with the. So, again, meeting with the complainant and other parties. And if it's still not resolved, then under this process, with consultation with the director of instruction, it goes to the superintendent, and the superintendent uses criteria that he or she deems appropriate based on what the material is, and it lists some things, the appropriateness of the material for the age, the accuracy, objectivity, use of being made of the material. So, similar language to what we had before. And then it has that sentence that we just talked about. And then, no material subject to a complaint may be removed or withdrawn for use pending the final determination by the superintendent, so that's also similar language. In other words, you continue to use it until there's a decision made, but then the superintendent's determination is final. And we did hear some board comments to the effect that issue shouldn't have come to the board and that kind of thing. So, that, and that was part of the thinking with this as well. So, it is a substantial change. It does remove the board from that discussion, however.
I don't think we should ever remove the board from the discussion. That doesn't make any sense.
And I guess I'd like to hear what other people think about it, or if you want more time to think about it. Again, it doesn't have to be on for a second read next time either. It can be.
Well, how would, besides removing the board, does the policy fundamentally change from its current status?
It does not direct that a committee be formed. It doesn't make, it doesn't direct a specific process. It leaves it up to the individual situation. It may be that the director of instruction might choose to have a committee, but we're not directing the person to have a committee. So, it would depend on what the situation was, whether they felt that that was the best way to handle it, then a committee could be set up. But it doesn't, so that's one change. It does not direct that. Last time it did, and it even directed the membership of a committee. That's not mentioned here. So, it pretty much leaves the process more with staff, ending with the superintendent. So, there's no appeal to the board in this policy, for example.
If it gets that far, it's insane that we wouldn't be involved.
If it gets to the superintendent, you mean?
Right, once it gets there, I mean, we, yeah, I think we're here, that's what we're here for.
So, that would be one option, if people felt like, and I guess I'd like to see what the board thinks, but if they felt like, instead of saying the superintendent's determination with respect to the complaint shall be final, if you want to say, maybe appeal to the board, you could add that sentence if you want more. I mean, it sounds to me like people need to really read this more and think about it, and think about what you see that you might like to have in there that isn't in there. And you can see the language that struck, so you can, if you just print this out, you can see the whole thing. And maybe that's what I'd recommend people do, I guess, so you can really look at it and just see what you think about the process.
I mean, I'm all for the superintendent trying to resolve the process using whatever process he thinks is appropriate. I don't have the flexibility to do that. I would like to see some.
Appeal to the board or something.
Well, I would like to see some, a little more, a little more feedback for what that might look like. But, and maybe you think that it needs to be flexible. Every case will be different. I'm not sure about that. I would then like to see, but in the language about, the language in the plasma about this, it said, shall be reviewed by the board, is difficult language, because that does not, doesn't define what review the matter, review the matter, I think, was nebulous language. I think that.
Well, yeah, I think if you wanted to add that they could appeal to the board, we'd have to be thoughtful about that. What does that mean? And that should be defined in the policy, because that's where you ran into trouble last time. And we don't want to repeat that again. That's part of why we took it out, actually, but if we want, if this board wants that, then I think we have to be very thoughtful about what that means and define it.
And I think what it means is that the appeal of the board, the board can refuse to even review the decision of the matter. We have this label, we have, in the past one, we had to review it.
Right.
We could say, no, we trust the superintendent on this matter, and we're having with the decision in the law, or we could have hear it. Those are the two options.
I mean, I think if it comes to us, we're obviously going to weigh the superintendent's decision heavily.
That's right.
But I think out of courtesy and just being a part of the community, and if there's a major problem, I think it would be of us to also listen to the reason that's bringing it to us.
And I would go, the language of the previous policy can be read to demand that, it says, the board shall review. It doesn't give us an option actually to review.
Right, so we wouldn't have to use that language. That's not saying we couldn't use that language.
Just a point of clarification, not a recommendation by any means, but just to be clear, absent of a right, you know, if you have in the policy that there's a right, as you mentioned, that shall review, that's very clear. If there's no language, any individual always has the opportunity to request that the board review anything that's not covered by policy, and you decide as a board whether you want to hear it or not, any type of complaint. So, now whether you want to spell that out policy or not, that's your decision, but.
So, you're saying even with this language, that the complaint, that the superintendent's determination shall be final.
I would say in this case, no, now you are for the board.
That's what I'm thinking. I think if you're going to say that.
So, if you simply deleted that last sentence, you have an option to consider.
So, that's another option.
But then we would get into the point of, we'll take some people's and not others, and why are we doing that? So, if you give everybody a chance to fair hearing, that's a whole different story.
Well, the current process, as I understand it, this last year, is that the process is referred to a committee. What was your role after the committee makes a decision currently?
To.
Pass it on to the board.
Pretty much, yeah.
Right.
The policy was very unclear. It was contradictory about whether or not I had a role in reviewing it or not.
It was pretty poorly written. So, that's why we're trying to fix it, and we're trying to make it so there would be more flexibility. So, there are some options here. So, we could, we could leave that sentence off, or we could say, we could state that there could be an appeal to the board if there's disagreement with the superintendent's decision. Or what you're saying is they could do that regardless, so we wouldn't have to say that, but that's a possibility. So, I guess, you know, we could maybe write up some options and then send, start another reading next time, and then, I would say we're not ready to do a second reading and act on it the next time, but maybe give it more thought and.
I'm a little concerned about all this sort of nebulous language. I mean, leaving it out, I think we should, I think we should say something the board may at its discretion review our appeal on the superintendent if, if, the board, its discretion may review an appeal of the superintendent, may review an appeal of the superintendent's decision.
I'm just writing it down. We have to work on that. I'm just writing it down, sorry.
So, tell us what.
That's essentially what I mean, is that we would have the discretion to review or not to review.
Okay.
So, we wouldn't have to, if someone appeals it to the board, we don't have to review it if we don't want to.
Okay.
But we can choose to.
Yeah, that's.
But how is a review determined? By any single board member or a majority of the board?
It would be a majority board.
It has to be, no single was ever a standard.
It's always got to be a majority.
Let me finish my comment, please. But if it were, if it has to be a majority, then it's basically a board, a board decision. Anyway, but you can't even come up for discussion unless the majority of the board wants it to be discussed.
Right.
So, it seems to me that that step is unnecessary unless the board has a formal role in any event.
The current proposed language ends with the superintendent's decision. Okay, but as I understand it, what Peter is suggesting, it says, the superintendent's determination with respect to the complaint shall be final. Before, it was the committee decision, and the committee decision was appealable to the board.
Yeah.
In the previous language.
Except that in item A, it says.
It wasn't the superintendent's decision that was appealed to us.
Well, this is where the language is poorly good.
It's very poorly.
In G, it says it's a committee recommendation, and in H, it says it's a superintendent's recommendation.
Right, that's what we're trying to fix the language. That's the whole point.
Exactly.
And we thought we would make a cleaner policy that would have, would have that flexibility. So, it depends on, so I guess, we have a couple of board members I haven't heard from. I'd like, I guess I'd like to know if the majority of the board would like to put some language in there that would say, that would give the board a potential right to review a superintendent's decision. Okay, and Jeff, you would, okay. So, I'm hearing them.
See, it scares me.
One, two, three, four.
To make it a potential, because, however, what do we take, who do we know? Because if there's no justification in it, we can hear it and.
Well, hang on, hang on. I would guess that the answer to that is, if somebody comes and says, I want to appeal this board, we would have to have a discussion in open session about why we would or would not accept that appeal.
But there's no power in here right now to appeal.
Right, he said, but Peter's arguing.
But he's talking about two different things. He's talking about reviewing the board, reviewing the superintendent's position. The other thing, which is completely different, is an appeal which comes from the complainant.
That's right.
Those are entirely different, and neither of those.
And I would be talking about, we would only hear this if we had an appeal from the complainant. The board, my language, my suggestion would be, and we can look at suggested language, I think we can look at it formally, but my suggestion would be, is that we may, we have the discretion, at our discretion, if someone appeals the superintendent's recommendation to the board, we may review it. That would be my intent.
You've got this really confusing, because now what you're doing is, you're putting, you're putting review, so you're saying the board will have the power to review or not review only if there's an appeal.
That's right.
To the complaint.
That's right. Now, maybe somebody else.
But.
But then what you're.
No, doesn't, that doesn't make sense. So, figure it out.
Yeah, no, well, what I think you're saying is that the complainant would have the right to appeal the superintendent's decision to the board.
Correct.
And what you're also saying is, it would be at the board's discretion whether or not to hear that appeal. And that's what you're having a concern about.
Right.
Right, I got it. I don't have the answer. I just got.
It's like what the Supreme Court does. They may not take an appeal.
They may decide they're satisfied with the decision, right.
But that's what an appeal, that's basically, you have that power once the appeal occurs.
Yeah, you can't, you can't say they have the ability to appeal it if the board also has the ability not to hear an appeal. That's the problem. I got it. See what I'm saying?
But that's part of the appeal process.
Right.
But that doesn't have to be right. But you want to make sure that's covered. I get it.
Now, if we want to review it on our own without an appeal, as is pointed out, we actually have the power to do that.
Yeah.
Because we can pick up anything we want to, so we don't need language about that.
I'm not sure about that. Not if you have a policy that says the superintendent's position shall be the end.
That was what Dan said. That's why Dan said we would have to strike that last sentence, if we wanted to leave it open.
Because I thought we'd bet, okay.
So, we'll draft some options and think about some more, too. That's what I think we need to do. So, we don't have a meeting again until November or something.
That's like a double step about this.
We have a meeting.
Appeal to appeal, and then you appeal.
Well, that's the way every, every appeal body in the world does it.
Right, I know, but I just think you're safer just taking all appeals, and you don't have, I mean.
Yeah, we don't meet, no, we meet the day before the board meeting. That's probably not enough time to get it.
We'll look at language next time around, and we'll see what we want to, but think about which one.
Peter, do you want board impairment to review without an appeal? Yes or no?
I.
I don't.
The answer is yes, because I don't think the board should exclude itself from any.
So, that's three different things.
I don't think the board should exclude itself from any business. I don't see us normally doing it.
I'm just trying to, we can draft language that'll let you do that, and then you can decide whether or not you really want it.
Yeah, I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason to mention that. I think this is laying out, this is laying out the process that we, the process so that a complainant can see what's going to happen here. Oh, this is the policy. I have a complaint. I go to the superintendent, or I go to the principal, whatever, they'll work it out. And then, at the last step, if I still have an issue, I can appeal. That's what the purpose of this is.
To me, that makes more sense than saying, yeah, well, we might get involved before the, I mean, I don't like that. I think that gets way too messy. I thought that's what you're asking about.
No, 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 absolutely not. But I'm just saying, we as a board have a lot of discretion about what matters we can and cannot take up. We wouldn't normally take it up, but.
If we have a policy that says it ends with the superintendent, as a board, we can't review.
That's correct.
We have that. We understand that. And so, the question is, do we want to leave that sentence in or not? That's what Peter's saying. He's saying he doesn't want to leave that sentence in.
Well, he said yes to that a minute ago. I'm confused.
No, 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 I didn't. No, I can see.
Yeah, you did. So, I'm confused. Okay.
I didn't, I didn't hear that. I heard, either it stays the way that, go ahead.
Suggest, not to make things more complicated, but we have a policy recommended by the committee. So, I think it might be cleaner if there's a motion referring the policy back to the committee with some instructions.
There's no action on this tonight. It's just a read.
Right, but if you're doing your thing, it comes back next meeting for a second reading. Then you get into the whole idea of the whole board trying to amend it, so I think I hear consensus you'd like the policy committee to go back.
And bring you some different options.
What I'd like you to do is go back, create some different options, bring that back for a first read.
Yeah.
Right, so could, you want to make a motion to that effect? That's what Dan's saying, is that we should be directed to do that.
Bring it back for a first.
That's right.
He always used those to do it.
Some move.
Do you know what the motion is?
Mm-hmm.
All right, no, I'm asking. Have you got, you know what?
I thought they should go back to.
That's right.
Right. That's right.
For consideration of language, for consideration of additional language, and that it would be returned to the board for a first read.
For a first read, yes.
All right, no, we've done.
It's fine. We'll just do it.
That's totally fine. And based on a comment Ben Richter made last night, you can make a motion like this. That's fine.
That's fine.
Absolutely.
It's absolutely fine.
Right.
In fact, we should do it more often.
Right, because it makes it clear.
I mean, generally, yeah, generally, we don't, I mean, I trust you to take off what we've done.
So, Peter moved, Eric seconded, and so now we have to.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Dean did, sorry. I heard it from over there somewhere. Sorry.
Any further discussion?
We have three different options.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so it likely will not come back in November, because we don't meet until the day before, though.
Board, committees, strategic plan, and goals. Just briefly, we have three committees, community engagement personnel, teaching, learning, equity, I think. Particularly, community engagement and teaching, learning, equity are new. I wanted to bring up for discussion in just a moment's thought that a review of the, not to really review the strategic plan, because we're all intimately familiar with it. But in the context of the committees, asked the committee chairs, as you're devising, as you're working going forward, devising what you're going to work on this year to relate it to strategic plan, the strategic plan, I think that's important guidance for directions to go.
I didn't understand what you said. You were talking over there mostly.
I apologize. What I'm saying is, on the, we have, on the discussion item for board committees is, the strategic plan is presented and with the thought that the committee chairs, in particular the committee members, as they're devising plans for going forward for the year, that they consider the strategic plan and how their plans fit in to the strategic plan and let the strategic plan influence the committee planning process for items that they'll be working on for the year. Does anybody have any questions about that, or is that just an obvious thing to do?
So, that's an item for personnel, for example?
That's right.
Okay, now I got it.
And I want to make sure you have the, I don't think we've talked about the strategic plan since the election, really, in April. And so, we have the document, and so everybody can, is reminded to consider it when they're working on the committee.
So, your thought is then that a report on that take personnel, for example, highly effective personnel, that activity related to that would be reported to the personnel committee, be on a personnel committee agenda at some point?
Oh, no, this is, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is that as the boards, as the committees develop their goals for the year, that they consider the strategic plan and use the strategic plan as guidance for their goals.
That's actually what it should say then, because what it says right now is that, basically, this is a really nice thought, and that is, by the way, these strategy areas from the strategic plan fit under these committees. And somebody's decided they fit under these committees. That's very helpful to us. And, but one committee may say, yeah, I'm going to integrate that or align that, or I'm going to make sure I'm informed about that. It doesn't have any process here.
That is, that is correct. The committees do not have a formal process related to this strategic plan.
Do we want one?
Oh, well, that's a good question.
Well, what do you mean by a process? I mean.
I don't understand.
Let me, let me. Let me, let me, let me-
These are advisory only, so we have to remember that, so that's, okay.
I understand, what do you want us to do with this?
What I want you to do with this, what I want everyone to do with this, is, is as you're, as you're going forward at the committee, particularly, I mean, it's less, less applicable to policy, but particularly with the other three committees-
Personnel, so-
It's less applicable to policy, but with the other three committees, we have a strategic plan, the committee should be part of that process, the strategic plan, so if you, as you're looking at, moving forward for the year with the committee, please keep this strategic plan in mind, and then, and, so strategic plan, let that guide the committee's activities. So, Susan?
Well, so it would seem to me if we were going to do that, then-
You change policy?
Well, I don't know about that, the staff person assigned to the committee, I mean, there are some teaching learning equity, for example, the director of instruction might want me to be involved at some point to talk with the chair to, I mean, I'm not sure what you're envisioning, I mean, and similarly with communication, the communication director should be involved in helping to plan some of those agendas, and I think that's what you're saying, if you're, if this is what you're going to do, so we'd be involving those people more with the committees, is that, was that-
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily, yes, we did talk about that.
Okay, because I just don't like getting a clear idea of either of what you mean exactly.
What do you want us to do with it?
In particular, the community engagement and teaching learning equity are new committees, they are in the process of developing the work that they're going to decide, designing, decide on the work that they're going to be working on, that going forward in this year, I want them to have the strategic plan in front of them when they're making those decisions, so that we can, so that those decisions are being made with you of supporting the strategic plan. Right? And if that gives anybody here an item or anything that they would like to see, that is, or comes out of the strategic plans that relates to the committee, you have an opportunity to discuss that, of course. If there's not, if you just want to take the committee chairs to move ahead with that-
Well, it seems like the, basically, the committee descriptions kind of fit this, so I-
Yes, right.
The, the charges to the committee is basically kind of fit with-
That's right, that's right.
So it's not really, yeah, it's, you're just saying pay attention-
I am saying pay attention, exactly, I was saying pay attention to the strategic plan, there is an alignment here, if we wanted, if there's anything that we want to discuss about that, we have an opportunity, but I also wanted to say, in, you know-
Not all the items on there have a committee that's necessarily applicable.
No.
But they could provide me something and we'll do it.
Right, okay.
So is this year, we, so who's we? It's a pronoun.
We don't have a money committee.
It's all you.
What's a committee in this process?
I don't know what you want, I guess we'll change, but I, mine is safe.
Or it says, wait, where's, where's the we?
This year, we would like to consider involving board committees in this process, so who's that, and by doing what?
It just says-
All right, I'll speak on behalf of our administrative team. We've struggled with, in previous years, how to report out our work and progress with the board. We've had some board workshops that have gone very well, we've got good feedback from the board that this information would like to hear, and then we've had other, others where board members have left frustrated, that we went short on time, we haven't had a chance to get into as in-depth discussions as we would like, and so my thought is that the committees might be an opportunity to have those deeper discussions about the work that we're doing in our buildings and at the district level related to our strategic plan goals.
Well, that, that was a lot of what I was thinking about the teaching learning equity committee, that's exactly what personally I had in mind, was that it would be an excellent way to-
Curriculum falls there, I guess.
Pardon me?
Curriculum falls there, teaching, learning.
Right, real easily, and, and so it just, it does kind of follow, because you do tie well highly effective personnel in that goal, so I mean, it, maybe that makes sense.
And that, that is also part of the, if, you know, we have a strategy area that's associated with the board committee, and that is, the board wants to have a discussion about a particular item, I think an appropriate way to do that is to put that in the appropriate committee meeting, because that committee can have a more sort of, a more detailed, more focused, more detailed, longer meeting, and board members who are interested in that, hearing that discussion can attend that meeting also. In fact, if there's some discussion, there isn't any reason why some of these can't be recorded also, if that's, if that's, if that is a significant-
If they can't make the committee meeting and they're not recorded-
That's right.
Then it's, yeah.
That's right, and there is a-
Well, and I don't know how easy that is, but I think if it's, if we know this is, there's an agenda item, and most of us would try to attend the committee meeting if we thought something like this was going to be an agenda, but I think, to me, the committees should be informed, and this is true of the, the teaching learning equity committee, as well as I think the engagement committee, what, what is the staff currently doing? I mean, I think that should be an agenda piece for those committees, and with personnel, similarly, if you need more input on what's happening to recruit and retain diverse personnel, I would think that'd be something you'd want to talk about, but, so, yeah, I think, I think it makes sense, so it's sort of a reminder, is how I see it.
It's a reminder, and then a discussion amongst us, if we, if that is, if these are good ideas, if we want to, or if there's anything we want to modify relative to, Susan?
Well, I, I think this is a great idea, and doing that alignment, I think is just I'd like to have, again, I think this is a great way to do this, I'd like to have a little more input from the administrative team about how you'd like to do that, because, so for instance, we can't just go into personnel, we could have a discussion about highly effective personnel, but how do we integrate that into the plan? So, do we then require staff to come and do a presentation to the committee, or truthfully, does that, does the board really need to be getting that information screwed? I'm still struggling with that piece.
I'll be honest, personnel, you're already doing it, that's all we talk about is attract and retain, that's our goals, so you're, I mean, there's nothing new to do there, personnel. We have, I mean, other than perhaps-
Well, actually, actually, we have, we have attract and retain, I agree with the broad goal, and the, the list that, that I've put out there on some of the major ball elements, we don't want to do all of those, but, but those can be some items that we could begin to do it, so I think we started on that there. We haven't engaged completely, but we've started. I don't know what you're going to do about business services and, and curriculum, unless you're full.
Well, curriculum's covered.
You got TA, you got TA. Use the term committee to hold meeting, the entire board, since we don't have one.
But Dan, we're still going to need to now very clearly reveal where we are in the strategic plan today, in this, the personnel committee talks about this all the time. I don't, I don't want us to be duplicating things that the group that's doing the strategic plan is already doing.
Right.
You're exactly right, so what I'm looking for is some good advice on how to align what we do. How, think about how you want us to receive this information and align it with like Dean's list, which is an excellent list, and do that in a productive manner in a reasonable period of time. Rather than just-
Well, I've talked with you and I've talked with Dan, we just haven't set the time to engage, this is the opportunity.
But we're also talking about, there's a group of people that have been working on this part of strategic, this strategic plan, correct? And they are at a particular location in the work that they're doing, so we need to understand that, rather than to duplicate it or create barriers to the work that they're doing.
Yes.
Absolutely, it's to support the work by, sort of the key policy, determining things like compensation, I mean, the whole, or all things that are related to the work that we're going to do, yeah.
Maybe we want that word in this paragraph, to discuss the process through receiving updates and engaging in the discussion around the strategic, and provide support for the strategic plan goals. That's what you're really looking for.
Yes.
So if that had been in there, I would have been done 20 minutes ago.
To me, I think the word align, that the board is aligned with the work that we're, the board work aligns with the work of our staff.
And this is to emphasize that, that yes, we are aligned, we need to be aligned, and that the strategic plan is, is a guidepost that we should be considering when we're trying to move forward. Dean?
I, I would suggest that, that the, our strategic plan has, has areas that may not fit well in the committee structure that we presently have, I don't think we need to create committees, add additional committees to do this.
Right.
But, but it would seem to me that, that Dan, you and Peter could sit down and look at the strategic plan and, and help, collectively help, pass out the assignment and work of any of these committees that, that the work comes close to it, so that we address the entire strategic plan. Otherwise, there are going to be some of the pieces of the strategic plan that have more indicators for more sub-things, or, do you follow what I'm getting at?
Yeah, well, I guess strategic plan was a lot broader than our-
The only one that I see that's not aligned is the financial sustainability efficiency.
Right.
And-
And again, the point is, the point is, the committees are advisory, I mean, the staff is really doing the work in all of these areas on the strategic plan. As board members, what we need to be is informed about what they're doing and talking, you know, so we know what's, that, that's been the point, is we want to be more informed,